Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular Select Board meeting of October 25, 2022. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll open our regular meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The orders are right here. And we'll circulate them for signature.
I got it.
Oh, we did.
Oh, okay. Yep, I got it too.
Interesting. The only one that needed to be circulated to was the guy whose desk it was.
Oh, you're Chinese.
Oh, yeah, he's on the way.
I didn't see that. Okay. Announcements. Any board member have announcements? And by the way, this regular Select Board meeting, we have four members attending. This is Kurt Hathaway. Mary Ashcroft has a prior work-related engagement and will not be here this evening. Sharon Garofano Russell is here, and Joe DiNardo joins us on the Zoom call. Any board member have any announcements? If not, I have one. And this was an item that I had neglected upon accepting the nomination and election as Chair. Under appointments, we usually appoint a Select Board member to be the liaison to the school board. And traditionally, the school board has also done the same with us. I'd like to correct that omission this evening and nominate or actually appoint Sharon Garofano Russell as the Select Board liaison to the school board. And that's pretty obviously because of her extensive school board experience. And I believe as Vice Chairman as well. And I know she'll do a great job. And I think that's important, especially now as we approach budget time. So congratulations, Sharon, and thank you for accepting the appointment.
Did I accept?
Oh, you just did, yes.
Oh.
The next item on the agenda is traditionally reserved for members of the public who are not on the agenda, who wish to address the board, and I see in the audience a good friend, and I'd like to introduce him to you and have him come up to the table, Terry Williams. If you join us, Terry, welcome.
Sit down.
Either one. The floor is yours. We limit this to at least a, or the maximum of a half an hour, so.
I promise I'll be short. I'll be brief, so. Just good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board and the townspeople in Rutland Town. And probably a lot of Rutland County people that watch it on PEG TV too. I'm Terry Williams. I'm running for the Vermont Senate for Rutland County as a Republican. And I want to tell you a little bit about myself this evening. First of all, I'm a lifelong Vermonter, and I'm a landowner here, and I'm planning on staying in Vermont. I'm not going anywhere. The I'm running with two of my team members, sitting Senator Brian Callmore, who has been a source of wealth of information for me during this campaign. And then David Weeks, who is running from Proctor. I was born in Rutland, raised in Poltony, as a Poltony Blue Devil, and an owner of Slate Hill Farm. When I retired from the Army in 2004, I got back from Afghanistan. I'd always wanted to be a farmer, and I'd always worked on farms and locally during when I was in school for extra money and to keep myself in shape for football. I'm like you. I'm a fifth-term select person from Poltony, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Select Board. I'm the Commissioner from Poltony to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and I sit on the regional and the Transportation Advisory Committees. My attributes are my work ethic and my experience that I'll bring to the State House when I'm elected. I'm a have-been. I have been a soldier in the Vermont National Guard. I've been a Vermont Deputy State Game Warden. I've been a volunteer fireman in Poltony, and I've been an EMT with the Richmond Vermont Rescue Squad as a shift leader. I'm a VFW member of the VFW and American Legion, and I'm also a member of the Disabled American Veterans. I've had thirty-five years total service, with twenty-three of that active and fourteen inactive. I had seven years enlisted service before I got commissioned as a Second Lieutenant. The advantage of being a member of the Vermont Guard was I could raise a family in Vermont. I could work locally to earn a living, spend time with my family, but I also I volunteered for duty whenever I got a chance. I went to work for GE in 1980, and I stayed there for four years, and I couldn't stand being inside anymore. So that's when I went on active duty with the Guard, so. I have three priorities. Number one is the economy. Number two is public safety. And number three is mental health. I think that all three of those need some work in Vermont. I know that public safety is probably my priority number one because I think the crime rate in Vermont, like most states, has escalated in the last couple of years. And my hat is off to all the public servants, particularly the police, the firemen and EMTs who have to put their life on the line every day for us. So, but I know that as a senator, I will not really have any priorities because the priorities are going to be what the people want me to focus on. And I've been paying attention to the legislature for the last two years during the pandemic through Zoom. And I know that that was a very difficult time for everybody, the pandemic, but we're over it thankfully, and we're going to get on with it, and we'll be able to get back to the people's house. I have experienced in, as a planner, operations and planning and training in the Army as a commissioned officer. And I think that's, those are the strengths that I bring, I'll bring to the State House. I have I believe that part of the reason that we have the problems we have in the state is because we don't have a vision, and we don't have a long-term plan. Right now, the problem I can see, one of the problems I can see is the workforce in Rutland County. And housing. We can't, we can't get people to come to work because they don't have any place to live. And people that want to go to work can't because they don't have proper childcare available to them, so. Vermont is in a downward spiral, and we need to stop the hemorrhaging. We're hemorrhaging. Our children have always, in my lifetime, we educate them through the secondary school system, and then they go away to college and they never come back strongly. But we're also losing our police officers. I was told the other day that forty policemen in Vermont have retired in the last six months, and twenty of them have just resigned. And I think that one of the reasons that's happened, and my hat's off to Chief Boomis, I've had the experience of and the opportunity to work with him a couple of times, is that they tried to take away their qualified immunity from prosecution for doing their job. And I, I don't support that, and I never would. It's going to, to fix Vermont is going to require a concentrated effort. We're going to have to create a consortium and build from the ground up, the grassroots, which is, far as I'm concerned, the base foundation is a municipal government. And all the way to the top, and then it's got to be a top-down opportunity to fix the problems. The governor has been, this is going to be his fourth term, and he was a Lieutenant Governor before that for two terms. That would have been a great time to come up with a long-range plan and a vision for Vermont. I was told by a senator the other day that, well, it isn't really fair to say the governor doesn't have a vision because he doesn't, he's only a two-year governor, but he's been here for five years, so. And, and we can build this plan generic enough so we can pass it off to his successor. You know, if particularly it's the same party, but the continuity is with the local government and the local entrepreneurs and businesses, the leaders of those organizations that have to be involved in this. So I think that that would probably be the number-one priority, and I haven't talked to anybody that disagrees with that. It's got, it's got to include labor and training. Stafford Tech Center is an excellent resource, and they, they produce an excellent product. More childcare abilities, and that, there's no reason why we can't do that, but I think the state government needs to relax some of the regulations on the childcare facilities as far as education so that we can get back to having basic childcare for people. We used, the families are gone. When I was a child, my grandmothers watched me, so my mother could go to work, and both parents had to work. So, and with the current economy, if we're ever going to recover from it, probably a lot of middle-class people are going to have to both work, the father and the mother, so. We need the funding to get it started. I think there's enough free money out there, let's say from nonprofit organizations that, you know, the infrastructure, the ARPA money that could be pushed down from the state to the, to help put this together as a part of the governor's vision. And his administration's got to be involved in it. He should tell his administration that this is, these are my goals. This is my vision, and we need to make it happen, and you've got to help me find a way to fund it. So it's going to require all hands on deck, and we have the people in Rutland County to make it happen. You know, I don't want Rutland County to become Chittenden County. That, I lived in Chittenden County for eleven years, towards the tail end of my career with the Guard. And I, I like it just the way it is here. We, we do need more industry here. We need more, more people here. But we're a four-season resort area, and people come here because they love the people and they love the, love the area. So, in closing, I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak to the people of Rutland Town. And I'll remain in the House for the rest of the meeting, so if anybody has any questions to ask.
I'll, I'll ask board members if they have any questions first of Terry. And, and also make the statement that we welcome, you know, this board is a nonpartisan board. We don't run based on party, but you know, we do have our own ideologies, and everybody knows them, but everyone's welcome here, all candidates for office in the county, and of course, locally are, are welcome to come and address the board. Any questions?
Nope, I know that.
You're in, you're in fairly good company because you've got two farm family people right here, and one wannabe.
And I want to be on the, the Ag Committee and the Government Ops Committee, and Senator Callmore said, no, that's not going to happen because I'm on it. I'm on both of them.
He's a good boy.
Yes, he is.
He's a good boy. My, my thing to you is unemployment is so high. And anywhere you drive, there's signs, people looking for work. When are we going to start talking to the state about stop handing out money and start handing out, go to work? If you don't go to work, then you better have a darn good excuse. And if you don't have a doctor's excuse, not a backache, because anybody can claim backache. But you know what? I'm seventy-five years old. I still work part-time.
Me too.
You know?
I'm not seventy-five, but I work part-time.
Well, I'm seventy-five, and I, and I do, and, and I'll tell you. I, for, for over thirty years, I ran a nonprofit with no money from the state, none. We survived on our, on our thrift store at the Open Door Mission, and, and, and we made it. And my other thing is what are the people going to do at the state to protect our police? And our young men that don't want to be police because they see on TV, you can end up in jail doing your job. There's no, there's no protection for the men in blue or in black, whatever it is. There's no protection whatsoever, and you know, I've asked, and I won't point out any, but I've asked cops, if you had to do this again, would you? Absolutely not.
I'm encouraged because I've seen, I think the most recent class that the Police Academy has forty-five students in it, which is good. I don't think that's, they're going to be deterred from it, but we do need to protect them.
That's right. We damn well get.
And we need to give them the best equipment. We need to give them the highest wages because what's happening now is agencies around the state are poaching policemen, EMTs and firemen. They're offering a couple bucks more and, and a career opportunity to be a full-time firefighter or whatever, and they're leaving the volunteer organization. The volunteer fire departments and EMT, the rescue squads are all hurting in the, in the hinterlands, in the western part of the county.
Yep.
They can't get enough volunteers.
Yep.
Volunteerism is dead, because.
You know, when I hear, when I hear a young fellow say to a police officer, go ahead, touch me, I'll sue you. And you know what? They will. They can. And they have no protection. That's just wrong.
Got it.
So that's all I have to say.
Does anyone, anyone in this audience that would like to ask Terry a question? Joe, you all said?
I am, thanks.
Anyone else on the Zoom call that would like to ask Terry a question? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Terry. It's been a pleasure having you here this evening, and you're welcome to stay.
Thank you very much.
I have a point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I forgot the minutes.
Yes, you did.
And that's the next order of business is the approval of the minutes of October 11th. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve the minute.
One second.
Joe's moved to approve, and Sharon has seconded. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions to the minutes of October 11th? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Unopposed. The minutes are approved, and I'll circulate them for signature. And your point of order was well taken, Joe. Thanks, and our we'll go to our Department Head reports. And the first report will be from Mike Rowe, our Recreation Director. And this will be your last report for a while here.
I'll be at the next. Um. You suffer.
You'll be impotent and come.
I'll be here next meeting, Cori. We made a, I'd made a change to the budget. I don't know if that made it all the way to you and to Bill. With the lifeguard, the lifeguard, I think it did. I sent to both of you, yeah, so it did get there. I made a change, so we are level funded.
Okay.
Okay, just that's noted, and Bill has reflected that in the upcoming, so we are level funded.
Um, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Not a problem. The grill came. That was ordered and backordered, and that was great, so that'll be up and fired up next year. The Halloween party is Friday night for town residents from five to six-thirty. I know most people won't catch this, but if they do, from five to six-thirty, right behind school, it's trick-or-treat on the trail. They'll be walking around. The eighth grade has come up with all the games. Coincidentally, at the same time, the book fair will be going on in the library at the same time, so if you want to buy a book. And our secret guest is that I have hired Aaron Oddette, who is not only our music teacher, but he is a musician that plays around here quite frequently. And he will be playing during the Halloween parade party out back of school because the weather's going to cooperate. So he will, he'll be playing. He's bringing a friend along to play with him, and so we'll have music as they're trick-or-treating around the trail, so it should be a pretty awesome evening, and the weather looks good for Friday night, so that's, that's a positive. So if you want to come on out and enjoy snacks, some candy, see what's going on, feel free to come out back of school or go in and purchase a book for a niece or a nephew or a grandchild or whatever have you that you want to do. Also, it's not growing, so I'm not mowing, so that's all done. And I will be taking down the tennis court nets and the pickleball nets this weekend and putting them away for storage. So if anybody calls and complains, I'm not going to have nets be ruined weather-wise, so they're getting pulled. I think November 1st is a good time, which also leads me to November 1st. I don't know if we're going to start the first, Ed, or what are we going to start for the gate not being locked? So that's, so we're going to start Tuesday with that because next Tuesday is November 1st, so we're okay with that.
Yep.
So no locking of the gates if we don't lock the gates during the winter months.
There's really nobody there doing pickleball right now anyway.
Right, but the weather's been kind of nice, so I kept them just in case. But I'm going to give it this weekend, and I'll pull them Saturday or Sunday, whatever day is nicer, and put all that stuff away for the season, and then all the water will be shut off. If it hasn't already, it will be shut off these next couple of days because the plumber was asked to shut the water off in all the parks so that we don't lose anything via freeze, which then leads me to the last part is that they can sign up now. Thank you to Bill for making the adjustment and putting our basketball signup form online, so parents can start to sign up now. And we'll hope to kick everything off after the Thanksgiving recess at school for basketball. And I'm still waiting to talk to Randy about our senior luncheon that we traditionally do in December, so I, I don't know where they're at. I emailed him, so we'll see what's going on to go with that. Other than that, I don't have much more unless, oh, yes. We were approved Act 250, so the park is green-lighted to go ahead with our biking trails. All the parties involved know this, so we are moving forward. The process went quicker, even though it seemed like it went on forever to get our permit, but we're A-OK. We are permitted, and we are ready to go, so that'll be happening. I think they're going to do a little bit of flat more flagging, and then trail work will probably start next spring. And so we'll be riding on the next spring, so thank you to everyone that, Mary Beth and Andy in particular, who spent a lot of hours doing that for the town at no cost, so I can't thank them enough for their time. This 250 is not an easy thing to write, especially if you have no clue what it is, which I don't, so I thank them. Other than that, I don't have anything unless somebody has anything for me.
Any questions or comments from the board? No, I'd like to I'd like to publicly thank you as the first Department Head to sit at the table and say that your budget is level funded. And for you people out there in, in Rutland Townland, you know, in case you're wondering how it is that we get to offer you a pretty substantial reduction in your property taxes this year, that's one component of it, is our budgeting process, and we try to be as frugal as we can. There are times that are really good times where we can take some discretionary items and put them on the budget, and there are other times where we can't, and I, for one, speaking on behalf of the board, thank you, Mike, for keeping your budget level funded.
Sharon cracked the wood pretty hard, so I'm sure she really kind of beat me up pretty good.
Thank you, Michael.
She did well.
I appreciate that you've, that you heard us and that you did what you could do, and that's, you know, that's, you know, and it says a lot, Michael, for you, that when you come to the people with the beautiful park that you've maintained, that they'll hear you, and they'll know that you do things because you want to make it better. And, and I, for one, who's been involved in recreation for probably thirty-five, forty years, I thoroughly am pleased with what you do, as much as I give you a hard time.
Thanks. You can give me a hard time all you want. All right, thank you very much. Have a good Halloween.
Our next report will be from Ed Boomis, our Town Police Chief. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening. So we leave the, we had eighty calls for service. A lot of those are motor vehicle stops and direct patrols, which we start those in the south section of the town, mainly Green Mountain Plaza, Tractor Supply that area there. There is a slight uptick in retail theft, but I'd like to say that most of these retail thefts, we solved them because we were down there and were able to take immediate action rather than try to look at video and figure out who it is with their mask on. We're actually confronting our local thieves and give them trespass notices and kick them out of our, the plaza for the rest of the good people that shop down there. We did have slight uptick in the theft of Cadillac converters. I've been chopping them off left and right, so. I have a rough idea who did it, but I never seem to catch them going. So far, I don't know if you want to go into the have a budget or keeping track of our, what we're spending so far. I don't know if you want to air that or at this point in time, or.
I don't.
I don't. Let's wait till Mary comes back.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, because that's only fair.
But you are keeping track of it.
Yes.
You've got a record anyway.
Yes, we are.
This would be this would be the record that's being kept by our excuse me, by our Police Department of the special patrols that are being paid for with the money that we receive in the settlement with Cortina Inn, which is extra money. Well, it's extra. It's, it's money that's due us for these patrols and not paid for with taxpayer dollars, so. Ed's keeping a separate accounting of that. And we're, as you know, from, hopefully, from reading the circle, the we're receiving a twenty-two thousand five hundred each month on the first of the month from now until March for use in these patrols, so. Or that's available.
And then we had earlier, was it last week, we had a meeting with the Fire Department and the Police Department in reference to the regional dispatching thing. Joe, do you want to talk about that?
I certainly can. So we met with like I'd said, the police and fire, and the dispatching issue is going to be very difficult, I think, going forward as to, the, the state appears to be in charge of how a regional dispatch for Rutland County is going to be funded. And to me, this is making it more difficult, but the consensus of our meeting when we got done is that somewhere in our twenty-three, twenty-four budget, which are the budgets we're working on, and I would probably suggest if be into the general fund would be a line I would probably suggest if be into the general fund would be a line item. For dispatching services and it would be for both fire and police. We have no idea. What the actual cost is going to be if we can get this up and running by next year. Um, so we are talking somewhere in the range of probably between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars. To pay for these services as our portion kinda based on the best guess we can come up with. So this is what the board is going to be challenged with when we're working on the budgets this year. Um, this is really new. Kinda new grounds because we just don't know all the moving parts yet. There's gonna be equipment. There's gonna be staff, um, there, there's gonna be a lot of stuff going on and, and then we don't know how. Um, the funding on a countywide basis is gonna be whether it's gonna be a county tax based per capita. Based on calls for service or a combination of all of those, which is probably somehow they'll figure that we'll figure it out, but. Um, in discussions with Chief Clark and Chief Dumas, this is, um, a figure that. Um, the select board is probably gonna be challenged with the put into a budget. Um, my recommendation or our recommendation would be it would be. In the general budget, um, because it can't be assigned to either police or fire because we don't know. What those values are gonna be for those two agencies, so. Um, the other suggestion is that I think we need to talk with our, um, auditors as to how this can be handled because. Um, as you know, any excess funds that are put into a budget, any surplus usually goes back into the. Um, capital improvement and if we budget a fair amount of money and then we don't use it. I wouldn't wanna see that happen. So we have to figure, we have really daunting questions ahead of us. To make sure we do this properly, but we have the funds available, so there'll be, um. No, uh, interruption to our service. Right now, the, uh, as we've been made aware by Chief Dumas and. Others that the, uh, dispatching is, um. I guess it's right now at about a minimal level of service and it's going to be difficult for the next several months or. Until we can get a center up and running for, um, the proper type of protection for the. Not only the citizens, but for our police officers and firefighters that they're out doing their jobs. Because there's nobody tracking what they're doing, when they're out, how long they've been out and so there's some real big challenges, but. That will be the recommendation when the board sits down that we put this sum of money. Into a line item and have it available and hopefully. Between now and July first or well, actually it's gotta be a lot sooner than that. We'll have a plan in place, but. Um, I'm not optimistic that this is going to go smoothly, especially if the state decides. They don't wanna do it anymore, but I believe they can't leave everybody hanging. I don't think the legislature would let them do that, so. There may be some additional time, but, but nobody has really any concrete answers to these questions. That's where we are. Thank you.
Joe, uh, the, uh, uh. Well, Ed, let, let me ask you because you were at the meeting that we had, the, 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 kind of the county meeting. And it was left in the hands of the committee.
It was.
And the committee, our representatives on the committee are the, are the county, the sheriff. And, uh, the, uh, and Bob Slatter.
Correct.
And. They're the ones that have to make the recommendation to the legislature. As of December, we were told to wait until December before we did anything. Now. Joe, I'm not disagreeing with you because obviously. You know, if it's an obligation that we have to pay, then we're gonna have to find a way to pay it. But my question. Not, not specifically to you because you, you don't know anymore and we don't know anymore than anyone else does, which is zero. Because we haven't been given any direction by the state. And am I wrong, Ed? We haven't been given any direction by the state.
No.
We haven't been given any numbers by the state and we haven't been given any funding source by the state.
But we've been blindsided by this.
Well, blindsided, I don't know as blindsided, but you know, we have. Uh, we, we have three state representatives. We, we're going to have three state representatives in the town following the elections. Uh, in Montpelier and we're gonna have three senators from Rutland County, uh, who can, uh, who can intervene at the legislative level. To get the answer to this question. State, you know that every single town in this county. Has to go through a budget process and they have to finalize things by March. When are you going to give them some direction so that they can do this? And if you don't, are you going to have, are you going to put some funding mechanism in place? On a temporary basis until such time as the towns can get proper budgeting in place. It's, it's just not fair. Joe, and I think you would agree, it's just not fair for them to wait till the last minute and, and then throw. A hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollar budget buster into every single town in this county. That's just.
I, I don't, I don't think it'll be that amount for every town because. They, we have to come up with a formula that's equitable to every town. A town that doesn't have. The volume of police and fire calls that Rutland Town, Killington, Brandon, Castleton. We're like the top of the, we, we have the most calls and, and that's all, it's been historical. So the funding. Has to be tailored to the population and the numbers of calls. What. I'm suggesting and proposing is that we have these funds available if that's our share. Because the last thing that I wanna find out is we don't budget for this and this comes up running. And we have to scramble to try to find how we're gonna do it because I'm not sure. Um, there's, you know, and this isn't going to be just Rutland County. This is probably most counties in the state. Are going to be in the same predicament, um, trying to figure out how they're gonna handle their dispatching services, so. Um, I have, you know. I don't wanna have to spend that kind of money. That's a reality figure and it's a figure that, um, we agreed on should be enough. But without having money there available next year and, and this comes out and we find that these figures are accurate. How would we come up with those funds without voting on them in March? And that's why I mentioned about how, how we put it into the budget or where it goes. So that money. If it's not needed in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget can be available when it is needed and not lost. To our town, um, infrastructure, the way we do things. And that, that's why I made those points that we need to do a little homework on how to. Be prepared for this possible expenditure, but not wasted or lose it. Um, based on our policy. So that, that's why I brought it up this early and, you know, hopefully by the time we have to print ballots and. Stuff has to go out to the, um, you know, town report people and we got those final dates that come in January and they'll be coming fast. We'll be able to have these figures and numbers, so. You know, everybody's aware of what we need, but you know, I, I know more than you wanna spend that kind of money, but if that's what it is, then that's. What it is, but we just need to be prepared. This is mostly just a preparedness, um. Idea and then once we can figure out, maybe get some more details, then we can, you know, have better figures, but we just need to be. Open minded that this is coming and it could be expensive and we just don't wanna be caught. Short handed. Uh, I, I don't wanna ask the voters for anything more than we have to, but I also wanna make sure that. We be able to provide the services they are expecting from our town and, and not. Through some fault of ours where we weren't planning and we weren't prepared. We need to be boy scouts. We need to be prepared.
What if, what if you put it on a, on the bu, on the bell on a separate, separate.
Well, no, I don't, uh, uh, my view, I guess, is, is a little different and I, and I really. I don't wanna prolong this, but I really think it's a discussion that the board should have. I'm sorry that Mary is not here, but I'm. This is, this discussion, this discussion will go on because we will have, obviously, when we do the general budget. I'm gonna meet with the department heads and, and, and go over some preliminary stuff, but generally speaking, what, when we do the general budget, it's a. Uh, it's a full board extra meeting that we do just the general, so we'll, we'll have that discussion, but. Joe, I agree with you a hundred percent on the philosophy of it, but I don't agree with you on the structure of it. My view is that it's the state's responsibility to tell us what the funding structure is going to be for this thing. In enough time so that we can properly budget. And if it's gonna be a county tax, which we have recommended a county tax. Then that's what it should be and we would know what our per capita rate would be and we would be able to budget specifically the amount. But I would rather, if we don't get information from the state and direction from the state, since it's their responsibility. And the reason it's their responsibility is they, first of all, they said it was gonna be up to us. And then they interjected themselves with this committee. To go back to, to the legislature to, to let them decide how our county's gonna. Do the job, uh, which is ridiculous to me, but that's beside the point. A lot of things that the state government is doing is ridic, are ridiculous to me, but my view is that we. Don't budget anything for it. And if they put this burden on us prior. To July. That we deficit spend for it and blame it on them. We're gonna pay for it and we're gonna get the services. But I would rather deficit spend and pay for it and put the blame where it belongs on the state for this whole debauchery of dispatch. Then put the money in the budget and bust the budget, which we're trying to level fund. Hundred, hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand is. You know, that's an outrageous amount to have to put in a budget without any notification whatsoever. So why not deficit spend? We'll, we'll end up with the money anyway.
You may end up having to pay twice in one year.
Well, no, we wouldn't, you know, we, we, we have other sources that we can draw from.
This, yeah, well, this, this is not, you know, and, and the thing everybody needs to be aware of is this is not a one budget. Scenario. This, this, once this is up and running, this is forever, or at least for the long term. Every year towns will be required to budget a significant amount of money to have the proper number of staff in a dispatch center. So that it works smoothly and, and people don't, you know, lives aren't at jeopardy, so, um.
Joe, it won't have to be done every year if we do it with a county tax. Because the county tax will be assessed on the towns. It'll be paid through the county.
But the amount of money that Rutland Town pays will be reflected in our county tax taking a significant hike. We are, whatever we're paying now will be significantly higher based on what the formula is, so. You are not going to get, right now dispatch service, I know from the fire department, they always bud, we always budget a thousand bucks, went to the state for dispatch service. And you're not gonna get it for that anymore, so. Yes, it'll be a county tax, but our, our county tax is probably gonna go up around the amount of money that I just mentioned.
That's quite a jump, isn't it, Joe? From a thousand to a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand?
Right, because, because the state police dispatch is a state funded. Operation paid through statewide taxes and that is going to no longer happen. It is going to now be a county dispatch service. Funded probably by county taxes and those county taxes will go up to every community. Based on a hopefully a equitable formula and, and I think that you will see that Rutland Town's share. Will probably be in close to the numbers that, uh, Ed and Ted and. Uh, Chris and the rest of us came up with the other day is this is. What we're figuring based on what we know from other agencies or other dispatch centers in other communities and other states. These are, these are realistic numbers. So yes, it'll be a county tax. So I don't know what our county tax is right now off the top of my head, but don't be surprised if that county tax isn't doubled or tripled. In order to cover this service. So it's gonna be somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, well.
But I think, you know, the discussion can go on forever and we can't do anything, to your point, Don, until somebody. Tells us, hopefully before we have to do any voting, we will have these numbers because when we do that general budget. There's always that county tax in there and if they could get this formula together before the end of the year. We'll know what that is and, and that's where it'll be. It'll, it won't be a separate item, but it'll be there.
Okay, I, uh, that, that makes me feel a little better, Joe, you know, because.
Yeah.
Basically what you're saying is the same thing that I said. The, the state has a responsibility to tell us what the formula is.
Yeah, but we don't wanna get caught with limited time.
Well.
And they have.
Yeah, that's why I said, you know, we've, we've set, we've set budget deadlines for ourselves so that we can get things printed. In enough time so that we can get a town report out and that we can get it to the people. Uh, and, and actually have a vote on it in March. Uh, I would think the state would feel the same responsibility. I mean, they have to know that the towns have gotta have enough leeway to be able to do it. So.
And, and we all have the same deadline, that, that deadline for when you've gotta have this stuff available for. The state deadlines for ballot items, every town is follows that same criteria, so. Hopefully, you know, the folks work, the people working on this will, you know, get this done in the next month or so, so we know where we're going.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, first of all, thanks for the, thanks for the committee work and, uh, and thanks for. Uh, screening the information so that you can give us a, 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 a rough idea of what it's gonna be. Um, but, but let's, I'd like to nail it down a lot closer. Than just throwing it in there to the budget, but. I guess, sir, we need to talk with Bob Schlatter first and, and, you know.
This, this meeting came into fruition mainly, uh, because of some issues we had with dispatch and, uh. The frailties of it and how we're being, things are not quite going the way they should, I guess, it's like, there's a safety concern for. For police and fire and EMS. Uh, with a lack of understanding, uh, between dispatch and what, where they're sending us and. Things of that nature. That's why we brought it up and we. And things are not getting any better. I think they're losing more people. I don't have anybody replacing the people that are leaving. Some people have been there for years, are gonna retire here shortly, so there's gonna be even bigger gaps. And, uh, the service that we're getting, where we're being sent. Fortunately, there's enough officers and firemen around that. Listen to the radios and can hear what's being said and can kinda screw the dispatcher. No, that's not where you wanna send them. You wanna send them here. There was an issue with the name of a business. They thought it was in Killington. It was actually in Rutland Town. Cause they had the Killington name on the business, which, uh, made it difficult for where to send people. Who to send. That's why we brought this up and it's mainly a safety concern for all of us at this point. That's all I have. Do you need me anymore, Tim? Cause I'm gonna take off and go down to the plaza here shortly.
Uh, go down there and pick some nerd a well butt.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief. Our next report will be from Mike Delahanny, our first constable. Was not on, so we'll hear from our second constable, John Paul Fagnant. JP, you with us? I saw you down there.
Hi, good evening. Yes, um, I think, uh, Mike is down working the detail down south.
Yeah, I think the chief had just gone down to join him, so.
So I spoke to, uh, I spoke to Ed Clark today on the building and he tells me that the. Geotechnical people have been talking to the site engineers and they're developing the parameters for the foundation. Mechanical and electrical people are talking together. And he sees no reason why we can't have a comprehensive set of specs to go out to bid by the first week of November. So that's moving along just, just fine for a spring bidding process.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Other than that, that's all I have. Although I did have for the first time a cat bite as the health officer. Um, I had had one of those in the five years I've been doing it.
This is like real cats?
Yeah, yeah, I know, an actual cat biting a human.
Ah, oh.
Get JP, did the cat get checked to make sure it didn't catch anything?
You know, as so many of these cases I've learned, it, it's the, pretty typical, the owner that's getting the bite, be it dog or cat. This was no different.
Um, JP, with regards to the building, um, a question came up, uh, one of our meetings, maybe the last one, um. Do they have any, um, the conceptual drawing of what? Do they have any, um, the conceptual drawing of what the building will look like yet?
Well, uh, we'll have. We will have, what we're waiting to do is just to see where the foundation is gonna be located and then give a conceptual. There are some elevations that show that, but as you know, that's gonna be dictated by the manufactured building part of this project.
Okay, um, the other thing that I wanted, so I believe this building, we're, we're looking at a pre-engineered building this time. Um, do they foresee any problems with, once, you know, we get this done with any delays and. Getting a building designed and delivered?
No, they seem to, to indicate that the supply chain is better than they thought it was when we started this process.
Okay, cause you know, with that culvert up there on Town Line Road, uh, there were some really concerns there. I think that might have even started a little late because of. And that's just a culvert and some concrete, so, um, but that was one of my concerns, um, because. You know, getting a building designed and, and fabricated and, and delivered in a timely fashion can sometimes really mess up your whole life.
Right, right. I mean, it worked out really good for the town garage. I'm hopeful we can have that same success here.
Okay, thanks.
Good time, great timing. Great time. Um. Is that it, JP?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too.
And our next report will be from Chris Clark, our town fire chief. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, the last two weeks, hi, how are you?
Good, honey.
The last two weeks been, uh. Kind of slow with calls, we had five calls since our last meeting, um. Two weeks ago. Uh, Mr. Ed, Eddie and the pump doctor came and tested all three of our, uh, fire engines. And they all passed, so that's a good thing for the next year. Um, fire prevention week is this week, today, we had a couple people go up to the. Uh, the nursery school there in Center Rutland, can't think of the name of it at the moment. Um, we had a couple people go there and on Thursday, they'll be at the town school doing a class or two. So. That's all I got.
Any questions for the fire chief? Hearing none, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Our next report will be from Dave Sears, our town road commissioner. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening. I'm glad he was brief, cause I'm gonna be here all night.
Great.
I'm so excited.
A warning.
Not really, I just couldn't help it. So we, uh.
Gonna take my plow name away and. I'll put another one on you.
All right. Deal. Uh, so we, uh, spent three and a half days up on Quarter Line Road doing some tree trimming and brush cutting and all of that stuff. Uh, in. In the process, our chipper quit and. Things you learn, um, it actually, the rollers, the feed rollers actually run on the tachometer. Somehow linked in, goofy, and the tack is now backordered until at least the middle of January. And it's only a thousand dollar tack, so. No big problem there, so we, we kind of have the thing hotwired a little bit. So we can use it if we need to, but we're not, you know. We, I had big plans of going out and doing a whole bunch of tree trimming and stuff, but that's not gonna happen. We just got this thing, so we're. Something comes down in a storm or something, we can use it, but that's kind of just where we are. Um, which we had to do on McKinley Avenue because we had one come across there. Um. Shortly after the last meeting. Uh, I was informed earlier, uh, I guess end of last week. Um, I'm assuming Byron applied for an equipment grants and aid. Through, uh, the planning commission or through the state, um, and the planning commission, it, it, when it happened. It was, um, we were put on a waitlist because there wasn't enough funding, and somehow the funding became available. So it's for a, a walk behind compactor for a big, uh, big sled. So I'm in the process of trying to find one of those and working shots of, uh, thirty-two hundred dollar. Uh, grant for the, uh, eighty, uh, twenty percent max, so.
I think Buy Set Essex Equipment had one set aside for him.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Might be a phone call.
Yeah, okay, I'll check one.
Um, we have a connection here.
I see that. Uh, East Pittsford Road, we, uh, replaced two culverts on East Pittsford Road in anticipation of paving that next year. Um, the, those culverts didn't know us anything, there was no bottoms in them, they were.
Where are the culverts on East Pittsford?
Uh, one is, um. I had the numbers in my head, but, uh, just up, going up the hill by, uh. Yeah. Where she lives.
Oh, Sand Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're on Sand Hill, yeah.
Oh, okay.
One was very across from Steve Pullen's old house.
Okay, yep, yep.
So. We replace those, we're paving those, uh, getting those paved back in Thursday. Um, so that'll be taken care of and let those sit for the winter and then we'll get that paved.
Are you paving the whole East Pittsford Road?
Next, next year.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, not the whole of it. From, uh, Tamrac Lane up to, uh. Just beyond where the second culvert went in, it's about a mile.
So not down by where I own.
No, no, I mean, if you got some money, we probably can extend.
Yeah, but you know, that's been done several times.
Yeah, it's not bad down there, so.
I don't think so.
So. Um. And then we move into winter, here we go. Um, so we're pretty much set with contractors, um. As you know, Rick retired and BJ opted out this year, so it's just the Hubbard's and us. Uh, been working with the Hubbard's quite a bit the last couple of weeks, trying to figure some different things out, and they're more than willing to. Help us out if we need help. I think we have a plan, first time out is always a Chinese fire drill, so. That's where we're gonna be with that, but, um, we got a pretty good plan, um, the Hubbard's, uh, Tim Hubbard Senior, um. He's got the smallest route of their routes, so, uh, and he's been doing it for a week longer than forever. So he's kind of got it down and if we need some help on something, all I gotta do is call him, we got radios. Um, we got them handheld radios, they're on our frequency, so we can all kind of talk back and forth and. Uh, we're just gonna communicate and get this thing done. Um. We got our salt price, uh, Wednesday of last week, uh, it's ninety-seven dollars a ton for treated salt this year. Last year was eighty dollars and thirty-one cents, which went up, just in case you were wondering, twenty point seven eight percent.
Expected that.
Kind of, yeah, um, I called my contact with Appalachia that I had in the past. And he can't touch it because he's trucking out of Albany and fuel prices are crazy and. Closest he can get is a hundred and eleven. So he said, um, you know, I gotta, I gotta back up if we can't get it from Cargill, but. That's kind of where we are with that, we're just. Um, they, they gave us the price for, uh, fifteen hundred tons, which is, I guess, traditional. And if we were to buy all fifteen hundred tons, it comes out to about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five, so. Let's hope we don't go beyond that. And that's kind of where we are there. Um, we put a hundred, little over a hundred tons of sand in the sand pile over the last few days. Uh, just to get ready for winter. Um. We fixed the little sandbox that the residents come and get their sand out of, cause it was about ready to tip over, so we kind of dug that up and. Rated the ship and got her anchored back down the way she's supposed to be, and we're ready for that. And I got a tack meeting on Thursday, which is the highlight of my life.
We're so happy that you took that position.
I'm sure you are. That makes one of us.
You, you'll have, you'll have a friendly face here.
And that's what I got.
At least you're gonna say.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure. So, uh, is there any way that you can back off the hundred and forty-five? To a hundred and twenty-five by doing maybe a, a skimmer mix?
A skimmer.
Sand and salt.
Um, we don't use any sand.
Yeah, say what, Joe?
They, they don't usually use sand, it's usually pretty much just straight salt, um. I think that that number is kind of what we budget based on usage, and I don't know if. Like Dave said, if they, they don't use it, we won't need it, but winner is one of those unpredictable things and, and you don't know. Until April, what you're gonna need, and then it's too late.
Right, you gotta be prepared, I'm with you, Joe.
Yeah, that's, that's really the thing, I mean, we're almost twenty-one percent from last year.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't.
When, when we, when we put this budget together last November and December, you know, the, the. Fuel prices hadn't gone through the roof and this whole problem with transportation and everybody just having a crazy good time. Going nowhere, um, so, so, you know, you're just caught with where we are, I mean, it, it's, I think that. The guys will do the, you know, it'll just, i- it's gonna be trying to be as. Scrimpy as you can, and you hope for either snow or nothing, because it's the freezing rain or. Or that warm and thawing cycles that we start to have, we seem to be having more and more of that are gonna make the salt usage, you know, more demanding, but.
Yeah, and sand.
The, the worst thing is these little dustings, those take just as much as a, a big storm, I mean, they're, they're just. You either want a lot of snow or nothing.
None.
But the, you get four dustings a week. You still gotta treat with the same amount, it just, it adds up really, really fast.
Yep. Have you gotten a floating cutting edge from Rick McCurry's plow?
Haven't got his yet.
Okay, that'll help too.
Yeah.
Those floating edge, those floating edges make a big difference.
They work, they work really well, yeah.
And what it, what does that mean?
It's a, it's a floating cutting edge for the plow, so it, it will follow the contours of the road.
Okay.
It's not a, it's not a solid edge, it's got segments.
And it's called what?
Well, they call them segmented cutting edges.
Okay.
Floating cutting edges, whatever you wanna call them.
Sorry, I just, I asked, cause if I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's, that's fine, and I, and I actually bought, uh. Two new sets for the Hubbard's, and then I got BJ's set. I didn't realize he wasn't gonna opt out, so, um, he, he returned his set, so I gave that to the Hubbard, so we actually will have a set in reserve for. Spare parts or to flip an edge if somebody wears out or something, so we'll be pretty good right there, so. All of the trucks will have these edges and they make, they do really make a, a huge difference. I mean, you can see if you, if you go behind a truck that's got an edge of, a segmented edge and their wing is down, you'll see the, the difference between. Where the main plow ends and the wing starts, cause it'll be like a, a skim, like a haze where the wing is. And these things, the segments just clean, you know, you get the, the wheel ruts in the road and they, they fall into the wheel ruts. And they just, they just clean everything, they do a great job.
Thank you for that.
It's good. Any questions anymore? Any questions of the commissioner? Thanks, Dave.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up will be Carrie Clark, our town clerk and treasurer. Good evening, Carrie.
All right, short and sweet.
Thank you.
Um, so one small little thing about the election that's coming up, um. We, while we have everyone in place for, um, the election day, uh, that's all set. I wanted to put a reminder out there that we're coming across, um, so since everyone received their ballots or supposedly received their ballots. Um. It's going to be, um, recommended by us that if you're choosing not to use your ballot but still want to vote. Um, and you wanna come to the polling places, uh, do so and bring your ballot with you. Um, it's the same thing, um, if you vote on that, on that ballot, you won't have to, um. Sign an affidavit, and if you don't bring your ballot with you. Um, for some reason, either you didn't want to, you forgot it, or you just didn't receive it, you s- you will s- need to sign the affidavit. Saying that, um. This is going to be your one and only vote cast, even though, um, you may have received another ballot elsewhere or it never got to you. So that is my reminder, so essentially, um, if we don't see a ballot in your hands. Uh, when you arrive at the polling place, um, we are going to give you the affidavit to sign, no matter what. So, that's the, that's the big reminder for election day, which is just a couple of weeks away. Um, and then I wanted to, uh, start a discussion that will not. Get resolved tonight, but start it, um, especially when Mary comes back to, um. Andrew and I are in constant communication, um, Andrew is our auditor, um, and. Him and I have, over the course of three years since I've been doing this, um, it's been the recommendation. After each audit is done, um, to, uh, do a couple different things. He gives like a list of recommendations to make things a little smoother and easier, um. But it's come to my. Come, i- i- it's come up, um, that I would like to move on a couple of those items quicker than. They're getting done, um, so. It's recommended that we have a policy in place. And I'd like it to be obviously a written policy in place for our depreciation slash money market accounts. That, um, we have about probably nine or ten of them at, in TD Bank, um, and then also. The same idea for expenditures out of the capital improvements fund. Um, because, a- and just to put it simply, I think that we all need to be on the same page. And have an outline of what it con- what constitutes, um, an item as being something that you can. Uh, pay for out of an depreciation account or out of the capital improvements fund. Um, and I think we should have some limits as far as, um, a minimum of what. Um, a check could be written out of from the depreciation funds. Um, like I said, I wanted to start the discussion, but. With my background, I just feel like. It, it, people need to be told something and taught something and have it essentially written down. So that other people in succession or in the future won't have a question about that. Um, and that way. It's also less room for error too, so, um, I don't think, and I had a discussion with Kevin Brown this morning. Um, Andrew recommended that I reach out to him to see if anything had been put in place before I came aboard or even in years past. Um, for especially the depreciation accounts, cause the capital improvements is slightly newer than those. And, um, he does not have anything in place right now, other than, um. What was put on the ballots over the years as they all developed, the depreciation accounts. Um, and so. Um, maybe we can put this on the agenda for next time and talk a little bit more about it. Um, it would just make me feel way more comfortable that everybody will know exactly what is what and. What we should be using those funds for. And I, and it is a recommendation from the audit, auditors anyway, um, it's just something that I wanna get going. Um, we use them all the time and I just, I would feel way more comfortable.
Do you have, or will you have recommendations from the auditors concerning? Those.
They said it's a select board, that you, you guys as a select board need to come. Together and, and, um, come up with s- s- what constitutes that and put it in a policy, um. But I certainly have ideas, um. Obviously, I talked to people in this building and we've come up with some ideas too, but. It's not a discussion for tonight, um, our ideas can come forth maybe in a future meeting, but.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we need to.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we need to, it'd be handy to start by, by seeing all those ballot. The, you know, the ballot items and how that was described when those became.
And and here's the thing, though, um, I can certainly get my hands on some of them. Um, he said that some of them even predated him, Kevin Brown, and that's, and he said that's saying something, he's been with the town for quite some time. So, I think if we have an idea of what some of them say, I'm pretty sure they all followed. Sue, uh, they all, they all said the same thing probably recently. Um, and then kind of come together with some ideas of how it, how we define each one of them. And what they're being used for now and um, just what past practice.
I think if we have a. Then you'd go to that guideline, if there was something, and if it didn't fit. Then.
Yeah, and I mean, if, like I said, this is, this is me bringing it forward, but it's a recommendation on our audit reports every year, so.
Makes sense.
We have to, we have to do it.
Yep.
Okay.
So that, those are the only two things I really had for tonight.
Well, we'll put it on for next meeting on the agenda.
Good.
And if you have recommendations or Andrew has recommendations. We'd like to hear them at that time as well.
Um, also before I leave, um, going back a little bit to your discussion about, um. Oh, the state dispatch and the line in the general fund, um. I was listening to how you guys would want to keep money. From year to year without it being going into the capital improvements fund, and Andrew and I were just talking about that. Um, because I'm keeping track of several moving pieces in the town right at the moment for money. Um, and uh, this includes the um, money that we're, we were talking about for, um. The south end of town and what's happening monthly, they're giving us money for that to happen. And um, we, we do not want that money to get swept away into the capital improvements fund at the end of June, which. This is why I talked to Andrew about it. So I believe, and I can verify with our auditors. Um, again, but I believe that what you were talking about for state dispatch would. Be along a similar lines of what he told me for settlement money. In order for something to not get swept away, um, as the fiscal year comes to an end. Um, kinda springish, um, it's up to the select board to make a motion. To um, assign that money. And um, ultimately, he has the wording for what you guys would do, um, how you would say it. Um, to make the motion, and then that money would then be reflected in. W- the motion would be reflected in the minutes and then we would not sweep that money away, but it has to be a select board motion. Probably separately for all the items that we cannot or wish not to sweep over.
Right. Good.
That, that I, I was listening to that and I thought that that would at least. Of that tension, um. Around that.
Yeah. And there may, there may be another one that's fairly significant too, because there's a, there's a motion that. I intend to make that might involve that as well. But that'll come up at another meeting, so. Good. Super.
Okay, any questions?
Anyone? Joe, you all set?
I am.
Okay, thanks, Carrie.
Welcome.
It's certainly nice to see that the state has provided you with an opportunity to have yet another piece of paper for the election. You know. You didn't have enough, you didn't have enough to do already. And and what the heck, you know, clerks around the whole state, they're just there, kind of available for the state to kinda capture. Kinda like dispatch money, you know, we'll just. We'll just do a little cost shifting, that's all. Anyway. Barbara noise pulling, I see your. I see your hand waving. Good evening, Barb.
Good evening, and hi to Terry, if he's still there, uh, us regional planning folks, stick together.
He's waving to you.
Okay. Um, with the town planning commission, uh, we meet Thursday, so now, now a lot of re- to report from your last meeting. We haven't met since then, uh, but we will be taking up our budget and reviewing that. The energy survey is, is out for real now. Um, and um, anyone that wants to help spread the word about filling that out. Uh, it's, it's in the circle, it's in the front porch forum, uh, with updated, Bill updated the Facebook posting. So, um, we got a nice little bump, um, you know, from the initial of respondents that we had. Uh, with this latest publicity, so uh, we'll keep that up, and if you would, wouldn't mind spreading the word and filling it out yourselves. Uh, that would be great, and that's about all I have for this evening.
Short and sweet, and are there any questions for Barb?
Yep.
Anyone? Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, thank you.
Have a nice evening. Bill Sweet, our town administrator. Evening, Bill.
Good evening.
And congratulations on your recent ceremony.
Thank you.
That was very nice.
It was very nice. Uh, all right, uh, few things to go over, uh. The couple items in the packet for you, uh, one is for an old business item and, um. Actually for both, they're both for old business items, uh, so you can get to those when you're, when you are ready. If you have any questions, let me know. Uh, the, remember the next meeting is going to be a day earlier. You know, around the elections, our next meeting is November seventh, uh, and that's. It's created by arrows on here, but I've also changed it all on the calendars, um, so that's a, that's gonna be just one day earlier. Uh, I talked to Oscar Garcia, uh, this afternoon about the trans first, uh, transfer station budget. For the uh, well monitoring of the landfill. Uh, we, if you remember, we put in a request with the state to go from sampling twice a year to sampling once a year. Uh, we have received basically a draft permit that says, yes, we can do that. Uh, we will be required to sample the well once a year, but do a, just like an inspection of it. Tw- uh, the o- the other time of year, so not having to actually uh, sample the well. Uh, but just kind of just do a, do a, a overview of it, uh, but he said, however, uh, the states are now, the state is now requiring. Uh, as part of the sampling to test for PFOAs in the water, uh, and he said, there's some, there's some. Rules, but if we test clean for a couple cycles, then we ca- it can go away, but that test in and of itself is a more expensive test. So I'm gonna talk to him, uh, tomorrow morning about what he anticipates for costs and an annual cost, so. Uh, before we, before I have to do any work with the general budget, uh, specifically, I'll have that number from him. To be able to talk about that, but he says while our sampling costs will go down. The one test we are gonna still do will actually be a little more expensive, so.
Good, uh, have you talked with Larry about this?
He's on.
I haven't.
No, I mean, I mean, you're the. You're the committee chair.
Yeah, I haven't.
No, I just.
Um, kinda gonna be what it's gonna be, kinda thing.
No, I was just, I was thinking, uh, trying to think ahead budget-wise, uh, because we have. We have typically put the amount of money in the budget for the two samplings.
Correct.
And they're about four thousand apiece.
Yeah.
So, rather than try to nitpick about. Just exactly the additional cost for the PFOA, if we leave the amount. In there that we have traditionally put in, and we don't have to use it all, then. That gives a little bit of a cushion to the transfer station people on their budget.
I think if we leave it at the same. This year, by the time we get to this next year, we'll have an idea what it's actually gonna cost, so. But, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have a better idea tomorrow morning, but it's, it sounds like we're probably better off just to.
Leave it alone.
Even as it is, because it's just, you know, it's.
Is that okay with you, Larry? You're on.
Yeah, Don, that's okay with me, uh, I'm gonna get together next week with Kurt if I can. And we'll go through the budget and, uh. We'll be ready for the following week to present it to the board.
Good.
Yeah, sound good, sounds good to me, Don, just go over to me.
Okay.
Okay, will do.
All right, uh, I.
Do those, we can do those two things if you want, we'll do them right in order, you two.
Here, if you're ready, sure.
Yeah, sure, I got them right here.
Okay. Uh, so, in your packet, w- letter, we'll do, we'll do A first, I guess, um. Is the. For the Townland Road culvert, it's the certificate of substantial completion and the payment authorization. Um, and I also, so I gave you a few, I gave you a few things in there, that, that was a couple, a couple items in that, in that group. Uh, it's the, the. The payment authorization for the, for the, uh, for the amount of the project, um, the cost for the plantings is in there. Uh, you have, and Don, you have the two originals.
Yes.
Sign in there, uh, and you have these, the uh, certificates of, of completion for the, for the project, it's not the final one, but it's the substantial one. And then a picture showing the, uh, the si- the west side of the road with the culvert and the trees planted, everything is, uh, everything's there.
Yes, and uh, I might, I might add, I, I, I was up. Uh, and took a look at the project and I just, I'd like to issue a very, very. Warm. Uh, thank you from the board on behalf of the town of Rutland to the Fabians for their excellent, excellent work on the project. Uh, and for their patience with the final completion, very much appreciated, and, uh. And we should, uh, we had substantial completion at the last meeting, so we wa- we really should have approved it then. So I have no problem with this, this, uh, this project was very, very well done. And the, the landowners have added to the plantings there, I went up on the weekend and they were adding. They were adding some really nice colorful shrubs in front of the, in front of the arbor of Vidae, and, uh. It's a nice looking project, it really, really turned out, very nice. It's aesthetically pleasing, I might add, so. Thanks again to Fabian, and I would recommend that a motion be made that I be authorized to sign.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the substantial completion document and the payment authorization for payment. Uh, for. Eighty-four ninety for the, uh. With the additional for the change order and, uh.
No, you're, 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 you just need to, you just need to approve that, that one.
Just that.
That's the two seventeen four oh five.
Yep. And that's the contract amount.
Yes, and that is, that was in the orders.
And he, and it is in the orders which we have signed. Any discussion on the motion?
Um, just one thing I wanna point out, Don.
Yeah.
Just before we go into that, um. We, we pay for this upfront, um, and there is a matching amount, but we do have some grant money that offsets us, just so everybody knows how this. Is gonna work, um, and, you know, we pay. Our, we pay the whole thing and then we'll be in, um, reimbursed by the state for that amount of the grant, so just. Just so everybody understands how that whole thing works, we, we had some money budgeted for this project, um, in the town's budget this year, so. Um, it was a well-done job.
Yes. And. Uh, very cost-effective for the town, I might add as well. You, you have the figure?
Yeah, we're gonna get, we're gonna get back a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Cost us about two twenty thousand.
Yeah, two, about two twenty-five will be the final number. Uh, Dave and I have a meeting. Scheduled for November second to do the grant paperwork for the, to submit for reimbursement, so.
I encourage the town residents that don't live on Townline Road to go up and take a drive and see. That project for twenty thousand dollar cost to the town, I think you'll be pretty impressed. Um, hearing no further discussion, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And none opposed, so it's unanimous, and I have signed on behalf.
Two things there for you to sign. And, uh, the other item in the packet is another old business item to wrap up, it's the credit card policy. With all of the changes discussed, uh, being implemented, and. Also, so, uh. That ma- mainly was the preferred, we added the preferred method of payment into this, and, um, we eliminated the. Cumbersome tracking of purchases, spreadsheets and things that's no longer necessary, so.
If I move to accept the policy.
Motion's made to accept the new credit card policy. For second the motion.
Yeah, we'll take Joe, let Joe take it, we both said at the same time.
A split second, in a split second, second by Joe, um, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Hearing none, unanimous, and the credit card policy is approved.
Okay. I received a call this afternoon from a resident on Pinnacle Ridge Road who thanked us for putting up a speed limit sign, did we do that recently? Seemed to think it was a new, a new sign, yeah, he seemed to think it was a new sign, and he was very happy to have it there and thanked us for doing it, and.
Very welcome.
I said, you're, you're very, you're very welcome, um, it was nice to get a phone call, somebody thanked you guys for something, uh. Uh, uh, over the next couple of weeks, when we do some of the committee meetings, I'm going to. Uh, do a little experiment with online meetings, um, moving them from Zoom to Microsoft Teams. We have Microsoft Teams included, uh, with our. Microsoft three sixty-five subscription as part of our subscription service, uh, where we pay for, to use Zoom, so. Uh, our subscription with Zoom renews in March, so I'm gonna, gonna see, could try that over the next, um. A couple of months, mainly with committee meetings to see how that, to see how that works. Uh, and if it works out well, I'm just kinda learning how to use it, um, kind of plenty of them, just never hosted one of them. Uh, I may end up shifting our, um. Uh, our, our online meetings over to Microsoft Teams from Zoom, it'll, we, we don't pay it a lot for Zoom, but we do, we do pay for it. And Teams is included as part of our, uh, part of our subscription, so we'll, we'll see how that goes, so. The, the agendas will, will reflect, uh, what we're using, it's not any more complicated to attend a meeting.
No, and it doesn't affect any of our equipment.
No.
It's simply the process and how things are laid out.
Yeah, it's just, it's a lot of background stuff, it will just involve a different phone number, but, but it still does, still has the phone number access, so. Uh, but just gonna experiment with that, cause it, see if it's a little more, a little more user friendly for us, and uh, see how that goes. Uh, the, um, we had, we'd started the discussion, uh, quite a, quite a while ago, about, about eighteen months ago. About establishing a policy for signs on town-owned land, and that was intended to. Uh, coincide with elections and things like that to establish, um, a set of, set of guidelines. We've never circled back to actually start it, uh, I'm, I'm pretty sure there's some, actually some, some. Sample language out there, and some model policies out there, but we're gonna work with the school to do that, and the board at the time, we were, we were good with doing it, but we never actually. Got anywhere, and, um. The, the intent was mainly for local elections, so that way when someone. the, the intent was mainly for local elections, so that way when someone came in and turned in their paperwork, they'd turn in their, their petition and we'd hand them a copy of the policy. It says, here's where, here's where you can put signs, where you can't put signs. Uh, cause there were, there, there were some issues with the past couple of years, so, um, if we, if we want to do that, now is the time to kinda do that. And we were gonna loop someone from the school in to help with that, so they had their input, cause obviously a lot of signs go on there too, but it kinda leveled the playing field and, and gave everybody a save of expectation. So, uh, just wanna put it out there that that's something we, we started a discussion on and never kinda came back to it, so it'd be good to, to do, uh, if we wanna get.
I think we table it for now, cause I think we have a lot of stuff to.
Well, there's not, there's nothing to table. It's just a, we, we, it's been, it's been on the table for a year and a half, so it's just, it's, it's just there, but but there, there was, there was a lot of discussion about, about putting where signs should be and what, what land the town owned, and it was, there, there, there got to be quite, quite discussion about it. So we, we started that, but we never kinda looped back to it, so. If we want to, we can. Uh, and on your desks, just for a couple of things. Uh, the minutes for the police highway, the police fire meeting, we already went over that. And, uh, the information from, from Jim Schultz that he, uh, he would like you guys to have, so that's there. And, um, the, all of the wireless internet infrastructure that we discussed the previous meeting uh, was in, and a lot of it is up. I sent a message out to everybody, so I've got a lot of it up, but, um, a couple of buildings are, are left to go. Uh, it's working very well, exactly as we, exactly as I hoped it would, so, uh, it's, it's great. So if anybody, uh
Okay, two things, on the, on the, uh, on, on the sign policy.
Yes.
So we were recommended to adopt a policy of some sort or other. I, I believe that went to the school board, and the school board said that they deferred to us to decide.
So it was, we, we
They had a policy, and they have a policy.
Uh, they, they do, um, but we, and we talked about applying it to all the town-owned land, so that way it was one, there wasn't a there wasn't two sets of guidelines depending upon where, where they were, so that way it was just town-owned land. Whether it be Northwood Park or Dewey Field, or the, you know, fire stations, you know, we, we could establish yes and no locations for, for that, so.
I don't think this is a difficult thing to, to decide.
Up to you. I just think we have
Oh, I'm just saying, we got an election coming up, and I really think, you know, we're, we're we have a responsibility, uh, to let the, the public know, the, the, the voting public know, and, and the candidates know that, that we encourage democracy. So in, in, in encouraging democracy, uh, the signing that's on town property, um, we should establish a time a time when the signs can be on the town property and a time when they have to be off.
And that's, that's, a lot of that was covered in there, and there's a lot of, there was a lot of questions, you know, uh, and assumptions from some, some people that put signs down at, at intersections and McKinley and Grove is one of them, where there, there's a, that's a popular spot for signs, and there was some some assumptions that this, that the intersection was owned by the town, and it's not, and you know, the, the, the corners are owned by property owners, and people's signs get put there. Some got removed and people got upset, and it's like, it's not, it's not town-owned land. So the policy actually was gonna list the, the town-owned areas where it could, where you could place a sign, so that way there would be no confusion as to where it was okay and where it was not okay.
I think, I think in terms of right-of-ways, that's, that's gonna be a difficult task.
Well.
Because you'd have to specify every single right-of-way on every single road.
Well, the right, I don't, the right, it, I believe it, it was a little, a little while since I looked at it, but we were gonna, we, it was just gonna be a discussion, at least start to look at the language, just to talk about it, but it was intended to be done actually before the last election. You know, before the last March election, and then that didn't get done. So it's just something that, that was a help to get out there for the, the people that were running for office to kinda be all on the same page, so.
Right. If there's some models out there, would, I guess, I'd have to see a model to see.
Yeah.
You know, what we're trying.
Right, and I, and I think when people put signs out, in all fairness, if you're running for election, and I'm running this year, that within twenty-four hours after the election, the sign, the sign should be done.
And we can put that in there, and, and so like, when, you know, and when the petition gets turned in, it's like, here's a copy of the rules if you wanna put signs out. And that way it's, it's, it's fair for everybody, and you know, talks about, uh, it even addressed like signs at polling locations, because obviously, you know, there's different rules for the, you know, you can't do them now, you can do, you can do them later, but you know, it's just, it just, it addresses all that, so that way it's just clear, and that way it's fair, because some people may not realize, oh, I can put them here, but not here, and that way it doesn't create some issues.
You think, uh, what do you think would be a reasonable time prior to the election to allow signs to be placed ha- at the two polling places?
I think there's rules about that. There's, there's, there's already rules about that.
What, one week?
There's some state policy about that.
Pardon me?
Twelve days before the election.
Well.
Can be out for twelve days. It's, it's a subset of the billboard law.
Okay.
So we kinda gotta look at that too, and see what the state has for, for restrictions and, and maybe morph that into whatever we do, or
Right.
I don't know, I'd have seen some.
We have, uh, I think about, well, when, when petitions do, Carrie, do you remember? Yeah.
Talking, I, I'm, I was here for that discussion that Phil was trying to get, getting going here. I believe it came from the school.
That it, the school started it, yeah, there was, there was a few people that were involved in kinda getting it going, cause there were some complaints about signs, yeah.
But I think the school has to be tied in too. They
No, they absolutely were. There, there, there was a school board, it was, I think Lynn was gonna be part of it, or one, one of the school members was going to be a part of that discussion as well, because we absolutely wanted them to be, yeah, so that way
So if we're gonna have that discussion, we should have Lynn in here.
Well, yeah, whoever, whoever they wanna have.
Or have our school liaison.
Right.
Yeah, but I'm the liaison, but I think we still need a school board member. I'm
Absolutely, no, they wanted to be part of it. Yeah, yeah. No, that was always intended for them to be part of that, absolutely. Right, it just has, it just stopped, so.
Yep.
It's on the committee agenda list I send out every Monday, but it's just one of those, it's just, uh, pretty low on the, pretty low on the importance list, so it doesn't get, doesn't get much love. So, uh, yeah, so that's, uh, that's it.
Well, there's never, there's never really been a crucial problem with
No.
Signing, it's just that you have to be responsible.
And I think it
Responsibility thing, really. If you put signs out, you need to take the signs down.
Right, and it addressed things about, uh, private private property, you know, per- permission from private property owners, gonna put things there. So there was a few things that covered. It wasn't, it wasn't a, a very long, you know, thing, but it was just, it covered, it covered several topics, but just something that was just, would be good to kinda put down and, and, and have, so.
Okay, well. Where do you wanna go with it?
Uh, that's up to you.
Where do you wanna go with?
I, I guess we gotta see some, some templates and some models and
Yeah, I can find the model policy. I can put it in the, uh, I can put it on for the next meeting.
If he, if it's the twelve-day thing, I think that's reasonable anyways.
Yeah, no, there, there is, there definitely a state statute that, that covers a lot of that.
Yeah.
Uh, but there is some, some, some leeway that we have that we just need to, uh, just address specifically, so.
And maybe we just, in, in our policy, we just mentioned the state statute.
Yeah, cause I think the state statute covers polling places specifically, but this is broader, this is, cause you know, we have the parcel like, you know, on the corner of Post Road and Route Seven, that's a popular place. So it's like, you know, put in there, but, but, but I've noticed uh, the other day that there's a lot of signs on the west side of that intersection of, on Route Seven that, that's in V-Trans right-of-way, and those are gonna get, those are gonna go away. So, you know, so we're talking, making sure that, you know, people know that that, the other part of that, I remember right now, is, uh, I, I get a lot of phone calls when signs are disappearing, that the town, where, where did the town take my signs? I'm like, town didn't take your signs, you know.
Garage.
State garage took the signs, you know, cause they showed up, people put them across, across the road here on, uh, on, between the sidewalk and the, and Route Four, on, on the other side of the road, right from the office here, and I saw a V-Trans truck out there today, just walking, just guy walking down the road, just taking them, trucking them in the back of the truck. So, you know, I, I think there's a lot of you know, and that's not our responsibility, but you know, just making sure that people are all on the same page when it comes to where you can put them, where you can't put them, and just.
And some unauthorized people have been known to pick up signs and take them away as well.
That, that, that might, that might happen.
We have no control of that.
Right.
Anyway.
I'm very careful where, where I put mine, cause those little buggers are expensive, and I want them back.
Well, they are, you know, they are.
Yeah.
And you know, you, you, it's interesting, you mentioned the corner of Grove and
How much?
They were like eighteen dollars a piece, about mine.
Yeah.
Nuts.
Yeah, you mentioned the corner of Grove and, uh,
McKinley.
And McKinley.
Yeah.
I, I call my neighbor who doesn't live here, he's, he travels abroad, who owns the corner the northwest corner.
Yep.
And I have permission to put signs there.
Yep.
I, there's others that have shown up there. I don't know whether they've called them or not, but that's none of my business. I, I know I have permission to put my signs there, so.
Yep.
I just, you know, you just have to be respectful of other people's property.
Yeah, so it, it, and so that, that whole conversation started, I didn't mean for this to take this long, but this whole conversation started because there were just some issues and some signs disappeared and and, you know, we're trying to figure out what happened and, and where they went, and you know, and like some, some some ambiguity about, well, is it town land, is it private land, so that, you know, our policy would dictate, like, this is where it's okay to place them, so that way if it's not on this list, then it's not, then it's not okay, like, that's
I have signs at the end of my driveway right now, but when's Brian Collamores, and I don't, there's a couple of them, and they know enough to how far back they have to go.
And that's, that's it. So that's, that's, that's important. So it's just making sure that, you know, we're, we're setting the, the, the playing field level for everybody, and you know, now, now, if we're, if we wanna do it ahead of the March election with petitions due in January, you know, the next couple of months is when we wanna do it, so.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, I, I wanted to, uh, I, I wanted to thank, uh, Mary, she's not here this evening. I wanted to thank her for reminding me to remind you to get ahold of Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Get, and get that taken care of, so.
We're, we're in good shape with that.
Good.
Yep. Yeah, I got, I got his email. I think it's, I remember you did, and I, I started those conversations right off, so, yeah.
Any questions of Bill? Joe?
All set, thanks.
Okay. That's set, thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Oh, where are we? I seem to have lost my, my gender.
Gender?
Gender, my agenda.
Oh, good.
Committee meeting updates, we've let's see, we've already had we've already had those. Um, permit tracking ordinance on old business has been taken, no, we haven't. Let's yeah. Let's go to old business board to review for approval change in the permit tracking ordinance.
My table in that one.
Yeah.
Move to table.
Motion to table.
Yeah, we'll leave it on the table. I don't think we need a motion to keep it on the table, do we?
Right.
I think we just leave them on the table.
Leave it on the table.
Is it, is, has that one been tabled before?
Oh, about three, three, four times. That's it. We'll just leave that on the table.
And it will stay. Credit card policy we've adopted. Social service appropriation policy.
We, uh, voted, we voted last meeting to have that tabled until the, uh, November seventh meeting.
That's correct. We did. We will.
Mm-hmm.
Um, substantial completion for Town Line Road, that's done. Any other old business to come before the board? Hearing none, we go to new business. And the first item on new businesses, meeting with our delinquent tax collector, Jim Schultz, who is here. Good evening, Jim. Thanks for your patience.
No problem. I do have a discussion about the signs. Uh, suggesting, because I discovered personally some things like chasing it down with the state, um, maintenance crews to find out where the heck they put them. Um, is to include in whatever it is you create, just a, a link to the AOT policy on that in the state policy, which the state one you already have discussed, but the AOT one.
Yep.
Um, and then they won't be like me chasing signs. Uh, so, um, what I'm here for, and, uh, I'm messed up, cause I have a family member gonna go in for surgery, uh, shortly. And so, in case anybody here wants to give me something, I hopefully won't get it. Um, you have in front of you a list of properties that I would like to possibly take to tax sale.
Isn't that up to you?
Yes, it is, but if, when you read through, uh, VLCT's handbook for collectors of delinquent taxes, they recommend that you pass it by the board, the select board. Uh, in case there's something that I don't know about that you guys know. Um, and the other part of that is if you look at my request, um, after the last property listing, um, it says, um, uh, sorry.
We have to authorize you to put a bid in.
That's part of it is that, yes. Uh, for the properties, um, there aren't any on this um, list that were on the last list, which caused us some issues with whether or not that was acceptable to the board. Um, and none of these properties, as far as I know, have, um, a, um, a link to water or sewer. Um, as far as I know, they're all, and I'll, I'll be double-checking this to make sure, um, as, uh, the lawyers do the research. The other part of this is, um, the um, I'm planning to use, uh, Gary Cupfer. I used him for the last time I, I did, which actually none of them went to tax sale. They all got taken care of ahead of time. Uh, but um, it, it costs a certain amount for the, for the lawyers to do the work they need to do. And the fifteen percent of the tax that is delinquent, being the maximum the lawyer can, um, charge for the work. Um, and so that's been in effect for I don't know how many years, um, and it, for properties that need to go to tax sale, that aren't valued very high and have very low taxes owed, delinquent-wise, the, a, a lawyer can't really afford to just do them uh, for that. So what Mr. Cupfer does is he's made agreements with the towns that he does tax sales for in general, where, um, he will bill the town for his time. And he, he's working to stay under the fifteen percent, but when it's not possible, um, he bills the town and the town, out of its funds, takes care of that extra cost. Um, the reason being is that you wanna get the property off of the delinquent list and back onto the tax list. Um, in some of the cases, um, and, uh, a few of the properties here actually do that. Um, you will see that there are properties that have been delinquent for four or five plus years. And the owners, uh, in one property case, the owner told me a number of years ago that they purchased the property many years ago. They were planning to build a retirement home on it. When it came time to build it, the state wouldn't let them because they couldn't fulfill the requirements for, uh, separation of sewer. Um, well, septic well and the now required alternate location of a septic and a well. Okay, and so they, at that point, got frustrated and said, I'm never paying any more taxes on that property. You can tax sale or do what you want, but the property's only worth a few, maybe a couple of thousand dollars, and the taxes do on it, um, on this property. Let's see, cause I wanna use that specific one as an example. Um, and I didn't put any names on your list, cause I wanted to keep that out of it. Um, the, um, I apologize. I'm looking. It's, it's a lot on, uh,
Hey, Jim, I'm gonna table it, because Mary's not here, and I think we really need all of us here.
Okay.
Okay, especially, especially, uh, you know, I, uh. When you have the luxury of having a lawyer on your board, you, you would be foolhardy not to.
Yeah.
The legal advice that. They come from that person.
That, that. So I have a, I have a little sore spot with that because I've, in situations like this, asked about legal advice. And was told that they can't give it because they're a member of the board and they can't give legal decisions because they're a member of the board. Okay. And so I, you know.
You're right. But, but, but as a board member, they can give us their opinion without being.
A lawyer.
Without being a lawyer. So.
Yeah.
There's advantages.
But it, well. In, in not only, not only that, Jim, but on something this important with property, with properties at stake. It really is a matter of courtesy to let all board members participate. And I, I just, I have a strong. I have a strong feeling that there's certain things that we can do. That we all know is kind of perfunctory, like we're going to pay Fabian. So I'm not worried that Mary's not here to vote to pay Fabian. But when we come to something like this, this is.
Yeah.
You know, this is pretty serious stuff. So I would.
Okay.
I'd like to have her in, in on the discussion, if you can wait another meeting.
Um, I can wait. Um, all of this is, um. I haven't started any of the process. It's all waiting for you to, um, to approve it. From the point of view of, I know I could go ahead if I wanted to, but. Um, for the, the, there's a few properties here that. Fit in to what I'm talking about.
I would like to know.
Yeah.
And I think the board members also would like to know. Which properties fall into the category of not being. Within the fifteen percent that's the standard for the lawyer.
And well, see, that's, that's the other issue I have is I've contacted a number of lawyers and asked the lawyers who have been on the board. Roughly, what does it, you think it takes for, you know, and, and I understand that the price can be anywhere from a few hundred bucks to a few thousand. But in it, just in a general term, what does it take to do? Um, the research on a piece of property so that I have some kind of ballpark to know when I do the fifteen percent. Is this doable by a lawyer or not? And I haven't found a lawyer yet that'll give me any kind of answer that I can use to make. An appropriate decision on that. So I'm just going to throw everything. Towards you folks. Only because the lawyers just aren't friendly to me for some reason.
Well, they better be friendly to us because if we're going to pay the bill, then I'm going to know what it is before we.
And, and.
Before we give them a blank check to.
We'll see.
On a property that's like a forty, forty hundreds of an acre. Where six thousand dollars of taxes is due and a fifteen percent of six thousand isn't enough for a lawyer, then I'm not signing off on it.
Right now, and, and that, the ones that you're looking at there, um. The, the ones that I am. In, in that position for, there's, you know, less than a, a couple of thousand dollars in taxes due. And when you put fifteen percent of that, you're down. In, uh, uh, you know, well, so twenty-five hundred dollars of taxes due. Is only three hundred and seventy-seven dollars at fifteen percent. Is that enough for a lawyer to do a research?
I don't know, but then, then the, the next question I ask is how much more than three hundred or is the board going to have to absorb? I mean, I think that's reasonable.
I think we tabled it. So I don't think we should be discussing.
No, but I'm, no, but I, I'm, I'm, the reason I'm bringing this up is that we're going to need this information when we do make a decision.
Yeah.
Otherwise we're going to be in the same situation we are now. Is it, how much are we talking about? I mean, we can't. We're not going to be put in a position of giving a blank check to any lawyer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have to.
Uh-huh, um. So we'll just leave that table. I do have some discussion on this and the fact that. How long will it wind up on the delinquent tax list if there's no decision?
Right.
And there's a, some, there's something in the, um. Uh, statute that has to do with, uh, the tax liens are only good for fifteen years. And so I think that if some property goes beyond fifteen years from the time the taxes were assessed. That those taxes may not be, um. You may not be able to, uh, chase those down any longer. So there's, there are some questions about that.
Okay.
And the other thing that I did want to bring up while I'm here is, um, um, we've talked about my. Um. Resigning from the position at some point in the near future. Um, and you were discussing or mentioned that you want me to get together with a committee from the board. To discuss what my experience has been and how we're going to handle this transition from me resigning and the finishing up of my term. So I would politely request that the board. Create a, uh, committee and, uh, let's make, uh, some. Schedule for, for getting together.
Probably be sharing and sharing of myself as a personnel committee, personnel and finance. So.
Okay.
And we will, we'll get in touch with you.
Okay.
We'll arrange it.
All right, um. I request.
I don't have a date in mind because we're, you know.
There's a lot of things going on, but.
Right. Well, it's budget and, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
They're going to do some traveling?
Yeah, some of those things. Yeah.
For you. Good for you.
Some of that, you know, the. The, um, COVID situation and, and my, uh, father-in-law being darn near a hundred. Curtailed some of that for a while, but, um. He has, sadly has passed away, but he made a hundred and three and three quarters. So.
God bless.
Yeah.
God bless.
He had a heck of a life.
Yeah.
You think about all the things he went through from nineteen fourteen.
Oh, my God. Yeah.
Yeah. So. All right.
Okay, well, thanks. And we'll, we'll take it up, uh, next, uh, on the seventh.
Okay, hopefully all board members are present and we can.
Make sure you have that for the agenda bill. Good. And, uh. The last, are there any other? New business to come before the board? Hearing none. We have an executive session with the, uh, town attorney. Uh, critical one, actually. Shouldn't be too, too long, uh, but it is critical and I would, uh. I'll call for a recess after we go into executive session.
Move to go to executive session.
Second. Uh, move to discuss litigation with our attorney.
To discuss litigation with her.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 None opposed. So we are now in executive session.